That sounds better.
Way to go Danielle.
Danielle.
All right, after a three minute technical delay at six thirty-three, I called this regular meeting of Littleton City Council the September twentieth quarter. Uh, city clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Schlatter.
Here.
Mayor Portem Ryden.
Here.
Councilmember Barr.
Here.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
Councilmember Grove.
Here.
Councilmember Melman.
Here.
Councilmember Valdez.
Right.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise and pledge allegiance.
The reasons to be alive, the United States of America, and to be welcome for which things is one way to under God in new business with liberty and justice for all.
All right, item three on the agenda is the approval agenda. Council, I want to have a chance to review the agenda. Any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, the agenda is approved. Objection. Item four, comments and reports. I turn it over to the city manager for any comments or reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Evening, members of council. I'm pleased to report that I'm just back in the last few hours from the annual meeting of the International City and County Managers Association. This one was in Columbus, Ohio, which is a nice place, and had a really good, uh, good conference full of lots of good contents, ranging from aspects of leadership and affordable housing sessions. Um, we saw, we heard about, you know, various remote work and flexible work and hybrid environments, which is a big, big topic for all cities these days. Um, we also heard a lot about lots of different programs and ideas about diversity, equity, and inclusion, uh, programs and how various cities are approaching that and also guys just connect with lots of longtime colleagues and not, and friends and get some, some good, uh, new energy. So thank you for your support. Um, I attended along with several other of our, uh, of our senior staff. So thanks to the council for your support, those kinds of experiences.
Thank you. Uh, city attorney, your report.
Thank you, Mayor. City council, no report.
All right, thank you. Uh, councilmember Driscoll?
No report.
Councilmember Melman?
Uh, hey, but I have a couple things. Um, so, uh, some of our house conferences they did, I mean, this month I wasn't able to attend, but, um, they're happy to report that the outlook, no, the overlook at Powers Park, um, the new affordable senior housing, um, development is going to be, um, breaking ground here pretty quickly. And still on completion date before the end of twenty twenty-three, so I'm super excited about that. And then the, um, finance board meeting was last Thursday. Uh, a couple things to report from there. Um, the twenty twenty-two community art project called Sense the Place, um, has just ended. Um, but there was a local artist named Bob Corson. He worked at the library and museum. They held two workshops, daily participants. Um, this is our second annual community, um, art project, and this one focused on photography. Artists were encouraged to take photographs throughout downtown Littleton and show how Littleton's Sense the Place continues to evolve and grow, highlighting the old as well as the new. Uh, the participants' photography, um, artwork is on display, uh, now until September twenty-ninth. So please, please stop by and take a look at that. It's very, 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 very cool. And if you haven't visited the museum in a while, I would also highly encourage you to go play, uh, to place a visit there before October ninth. Um, the museum's current exhibition showcases a Denver local artist, local Denver artist. Um, her name is Danielle Seawalker. Danielle's from South Dakota and is enrolled as a citizen of the Standing Rock Sioux Tribe. Um, I saw some of her artwork this past Thursday. It is incredibly unique. And it explores the, quote unquote, it explores the intersection of Native American stereotypes, micro-rutians, and colonialist structures. It's fantastic. We just, I would highly recommend you go, take your time, stroll through the, the artwork, and immerse yourself in all the visual stories that are presented to you. And last thing is, um, I'm excited to go see Xanadu tomorrow night at Town Hall Art, or Thursday night at Town Hall Art Center, so please support Local Artist Theater and go to see Xanadu. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Valdez.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi, I just want to clarify through our audience that, uh, Arvada has lost another police officer a couple Sunday's ago. Um, it was a young officer, I think he was about, what, twenty, twenty-seven years old, Officer Dylan Michael Volkoff. Uh, he was killed in one of duty. Well, this past Sunday, a Will County Sheriff, the Alex Heinz Newitz, twenty-four-year-old, was killed on her way to work. She struck by another vehicle. Um, somebody who should not have been driving should have been in jail, uh, and that driver ran away and did not assist her and she died. Uh, you know, this is what our, our, our men and women in Bloom, you know, they, they risk their lives every day. And, uh, we should all be thankful for that, the city of Littleton and the great officers that we have. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr?
Yeah, just a few, uh, quick notes here. So the Next Generation Advisory Committee met this last month, uh, for their, for the month of September, uh, to work further on, uh, policy suggestions surrounding the DEI, uh, audit that, uh, we are tentatively, uh, going to approve in, uh, budget discussions. Um, so I'm looking forward to seeing the finalized version of what their, uh, suggestions are for that process, for that auditing procedure to hopefully take place in twenty twenty-three. Um, Dr. Cog, uh, so there is the, uh, monthly meeting coming up this Wednesday. Uh, however, in two weeks ago, we had a public comment forum on the new twenty-fifty metro vision planning process as well as the, um, amended greenhouse gas emissions rule. And this was an opportunity for a lot of members of the public to come and speak. Um, and we heard from a lot of different, like a variety of groups, actually. Uh, bicycle coalitions, we heard from RTD, we heard from a lot of citizen groups talking about the need for, uh, better complete streets programs, obviously looking at multimodal transportation options to get around in short distances, long distances. Um, I think there was just an overall sense of encouragement that, you know, Dr. Cog is putting forth a plan that's moving in the right direction and meeting all the municipalities' needs. Um, one common theme that was brought up is land use planning. Dr. Cog currently does not have a hand in, like, directing land use planning per se, but it was mentioned, I think, throughout that public comment period how important, uh, good land use planning and regional transportation systems have to work together. So there was a lot of encouragement for Dr. Cog to get into the land use planning game and provide assistance to municipalities. Um, and then my last note here is, uh, LPS, I know we have LPS here tonight speaking, or we have representatives, uh, talking about the community center tonight, so I'm not going to go on about that. They'll tell you all about it, but I'm happy to say that the board has approved a contractor for a search firm for the next superintendent. So they'll be, uh, putting out that, uh, those notices as well, uh, very soon. So we're looking forward to seeing who they come up with for a superintendent, and that's all I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Grove?
Yes, uh, last Friday night, I attended a fundraising event for the High Line Canal Conservancy. As you know, they've, Denver Water is no longer going to, um, use the canal to transport water, uh, and they're going to use pipes. And so as a result, uh, the Conservancy is trying to preserve the High Line Canal for recreation, and it's quite a job. So anyhow, they had a lovely event, uh, over by their new facility. It's right off the canal, it's near Orchard Street. And there was, I'd say about seven hundred people that attended this event, and they had auctions and they had, um, information about the High Line. So it was a wonderful event, and I was glad I was able to go. Uh, another thing that is coming up is on the twenty-ninth, uh, Jackass Hill, uh, South Suburban is going to present their concept on Jackass Hill. They've taken input from citizens for, uh, over the last year, a couple of open meetings, and now they're going to present the concepts and get some feedback so that the long-term strategy for Jackass Hill, um, will be solidified of, um, for the next five years. And last but not least, uh, Gretchen and I are going to have a citizen meeting on Saturday, October, uh, Saturday, October first. It's going to be at ten o'clock till eleven-thirty. It's open to all citizens and business owners. And the format's going to be a little different than what we've done in the past. It's going to be roundtable discussions, and so we can have citizens talking about different issues affecting the city. And after that, then you can walk across, uh, the street to, uh, Kittering Park where there'll be the craft fair, and that starts about ten o'clock and goes, I think, till five. And it's a wonderful event. And that's it.
Thank you. Mayor Portem?
No report.
All right, just a couple of things for me. Um, I'm sure, as Councilmember Barr mentioned, and we'll hear shortly, tomorrow is the first LPS East Community Center, uh, meeting, so we'll hear more about that in a bit. Uh, Thursday, on the twenty-second, is the North Littleton Promise Fiesta. People can find more about that, uh, uh, northlittletonpromise.org. Uh, next week, the twenty-sixth, is the South Bridge Park Improvement Celebration, um, from four to six. Uh, coming up here in October, I will be taking part in RTD's Subregional Service Councils, um, which is, uh, they have five different, um, subregions and councils that will kind of, uh, help get local governments and other stakeholders a seat at the table to make sure our perspectives are part of the process when making, um, service, um, delivery recommendations to the board of directors. Um, I think we'll be meeting on Halloween is what I think the day that was available for. And then, uh, last day is National Voter Registration Day, so with only forty-nine days before the election, if you're not already registered to vote, I would just urge you to get registered to vote. Um, and Councilmember Driscoll, did you want to say something?
Yeah, just a reminder, uh, tomorrow, uh, starting at three, the Littleton K-9 units having a fundraiser. Uh, it'll be at Jackass Hill Brewery, right there on, uh, Main and Prince, and I think that goes until ten o'clock. So come out and support the K-9 group. Thanks.
All right, um, next up, item five, our scheduled appearances. We have three scheduled appearances tonight. So I'll ask them to come on down to the, uh, lectern here. Uh, first up, we have Rick Dodd, the CEO of Littleton Adventist Hospital. Good evening.
Good evening. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to join tonight. My name is Rick Dodd, CEO of Littleton Avenus Hospital. Boy, it's good to see friendly faces. And, uh, as I looked at the, uh, agenda for tonight, you really do have the fabric, excuse me. What's that? I missed it.
Where do you normally go?
Oh, right, all right. So, well, I can tell you lots of places. When I looked at the agenda tonight, I just noticed the fabric of the community is represented, and that's great. Schools, hospitals, and, uh, you've even got judicial law systems being honored as well, and I think that's just absolutely phenomenal. So just, I want to commend you for the agenda tonight, but I want to start out just with a, probably with the most important thing to us, and that's our mission. Our mission is to share Christ's love in lots of different ways, and you can interpret that in many things, but I wanted to start, because I think our mission really starts with stories, right? So when we think of the difference that a community hospital can make as an organization, we're a regional referral center. We're Centura's only regional referral center. We'll talk a little bit more about that in the Denver Region Full Service Regional Referral Center. What that means is more and more patients are starting to come to the Littleton area to receive care. As we advance services, and I'll start to tell you a little bit more about what those advancement of services are, more and more people are going to seeking, be seeking the community of Littleton for respite and for, uh, making sure that they can heal in a unique way. But really, our mission starts with our people. I want to tell you about a baby, and it's September, right? So we're going to call this baby Baby August. How's that? We're going to say it's August. Baby August was born March twenty, two thousand and two. Uh, we have the capacity at Littleton Avenus Hospital to take care of babies down to twenty-six weeks old. This baby was twenty-six weeks and three days. And, uh, August was born at two pounds, four ounces. So you can imagine the Littletons that we have the responsibility and the complete honor and privilege to be able to take care of as an organization. Baby August, as you can imagine, at that age, had ups and downs early in her life. And due to the great care that was given, due to round the clock, I just had an evening event with Dr. Hollinger before I came here, and he's our NICU. Uh, it offers oversight, medical direction by Dr. Hollinger, who is an amazing individual, is a family man himself. And, uh, on May twenty, uh, Baby August was five pounds, eight ounces, which is pretty neat. Then later on, on June twenty, Baby August was seven pounds, fourteen ounces. What's unique about Baby August, though, Baby August spent a hundred and two days with us. But on a hundred and one days, we got to have a Dalmatian birthday, and that's what it is, a hundred and one Dalmatians. So what we do is we dress up Baby August in a hundred and Dalmatians, and we have a big celebration. That's what's unique about some of the things that are done. That's not done anywhere, but it's something that when a baby hits a hundred and one days within our NICU over at Littleton Avenus Hospital, it's something that the staff developed back in nineteen ninety-five. So for many years, the organization has been focused on providing those types of experience for our community, and that truly is the fabric of our organization. So moving forward, we are part of a connected health system, part of Centura Health, going to be twenty hospitals with the organization being built up there in, uh, Penrose and, uh, outside of Colorado Springs, just right there, right as you enter into Colorado Springs, looks like a stadium going up right there. That's what you'd notice. That's what that is. That's InterQuest Hospital. And so that's part of twenty hospitals, but what it does is it strengthens, strengthens our local care, particularly when we talk about the strategies where Littleton's a part of overall. A map which shows our ecosystem, and as you can see, we're pretty clustered there in the Denver region as well, but now extending to greater Aug, greater Kansas as well. Littleton Hospital opened in nineteen eighty-nine. We're a staple within the community. We've seen the community up and down as well. And, uh, through the best of times and through the worst of times. Our chapel is called Clarity Chapel. Many of you know why it's called Clarity Chapel, and it's for a reason of Claire. And we've been involved in this organization. We've been involved in this community for many years. We're two hundred and thirty-one licensed beds, twelve hundred and thirty associates come to work here from, uh, all over, uh, Denver. We have one individual who travels, travels an hour and a half to be part of our organization as well, which is pretty amazing when you think about it. We do a lot of admissions. We don't do a lot of ED visits. We provide a lot of uncompensated care. All of that is important. What's on this page is as well is very important. We're a Level Two Trauma Center, Comprehensive Stroke Center. What that means is we've got neurologists on call twenty-four seven. So if there's any type of situation that comes up where you would need neurological intervention, we're able to take that out through our interventional radiology lab, which we're building a third one of. This is an incredibly important aspect of care. As we've seen through COVID, individuals have almost transitioned even more to episodic care. So the transitional utilizing of primary care for those visits that can catch things early, whether it's screenings or whether or not screenings, we're starting to see that in the care as well as we see our emergency care exhibiting signs of the things that we probably knew were always going to happen as we've walked through the pandemic for the last two years. We have an epilepsy monitoring unit with an epileptologist who does a wonderful job, a Level Three NICU, which we've talked a little bit about. We do some complex orthopedic surgeries, some interventional radiology. We're a regional referral center, which means we take the sickest of the sick for all of Centura. Right here, we're the only comprehensive regional referral center for Centura for the Denver region, which means the babies are really what separate us there. All of that's not what makes us special. It's our people. Our people are truly unique in our aspects of care. Those individuals are, uh, truly unique and gifted individuals. We're spread out, uh, from a regional referral per center, center perspective. This is a map of Centura's locations within the Denver region. We're starting to receive referrals into the Littleton area, and we're being relied upon for that sick care. We rarely transfer out of Littleton Hospital, and that's what's important. Care remains local when it comes to Little, Littleton Avenus Hospital. So some recent happenings, I thought it would be kind of fun to show some pictures. Many of us know someone who's recently moved to town and can be easily recognized within a photo on that page. Well, if you've read anything about Russell Wilson, Russell Wilson enjoys visiting local hospitals. Russell Wilson's mother is an ER nurse, also case management. Someone who's familiar with hospitals, and I got to tell you, is incredibly comfortable within a hospital setting. It's an individual who meets the individual's energy, and that's important, because sometimes when you walk into a situation, the energy in which you meet that individual may not be the energy in which they need that day. And so by working in hospitals, he just knows. He visited our hospital a few weeks ago. We're really excited about that. He's going to continue to be coming to our hospital. We're his closest home hospital. We were just voted number five in the state of Colorado by U.S. News World's, uh, regional best hospitals. By U.S. News and World Report, we are number five in the state of Colorado. We're the highest non-academic center, uh, within that organization. So a lot of stuff is happening right here in Littleton. And as well, when you talk about babies, we had a neat story that was featured on the Channel Seven News recently about a hospital delivers Ukrainian refugee baby free of charge. We received a call from a community member who said, "We've met someone. They have no resources. They've got no abilities whatsoever. Please help." Of course, we took that as a personal challenge and a personal opportunity for us to create an incredible moment. So we had our physicians fighting over the opportunity to deliver this baby for free, which was pretty neat, uh, to see what happens overall. And, uh, we're part of the fabric of the community. I couldn't get by this without, uh, showing a picture to you, Mayor. So we've got Mayor Kyle right there, state of the city. We were there. That's pretty exciting. The Littleton, uh, Criterion, saw that on the screensaver as well before we were, uh, waiting to get started. The Littleton Criterion was an amazing event. We actually have a board member who participates in that, and, uh, Littleton Public Schools and the foundation. I just had to have a shout-out, and the great work that they do, uh, we want to be involved in the work that they do. We're continuing to strengthen those relationships as well. I think that's important that we're just talking in the organization, just talking as a community. In addition, we've just completed, and we're going to be rolling out in November of two thousand and twenty-two, our Community Health Needs Assessment. Uh, as a committee, as a community partner, the city of Littleton, along with thirty other community partners, participated in a survey regarding our community heat, community needs from a health perspective. We've worked with a number of different organizations within this, but it really identified three clear glaring top opportunities. Number one, access to safe and stable housing. Boy, folks, you talk about that all the time, don't you? Uh, number two, disease and injuries. One thing of particularly note, and it is extremely important to me, I've got personal situation with this, is, uh, is the mental health side and, and suicide prevention aspect of it. And community capacity building, and that's regarding food security. Uh, food security, we actually have partnered with an organization. They come on site every Thursday, and we partner with them in our parking lot to offer free food, and, uh, not only to our, uh, individuals within our employee population who may qualify, but also open it up to the community, and it's well-received. You receive well over a hundred to two hundred people a week who utilize this for services, for access to good quality food right there from our campus. So that's important overall as well. I thought it would be important to also note from a population density perspective, that blue line that you see around there, hopefully you can see it. That's where seventy-five percent of our population for our patients come from. That's the blue line. That's the population demographic. That big red arrow is the main hospital, and that little red arrow is our freestanding ER right there. And so I just wanted to make sure to point that out, is that some of the population that we serve overall. In addition, as we think, continue to look forward to the future, we're always looking forward to what's the next thing that we can continue to develop where the community is utilizing. As we've looked at the community demographics, we're noticing the community demographics support the need for advanced cardiac care. That advanced cardiac care, as you can see a picture of it, that's a building we've been working with. We've been working with the city. Thank you so much for your support in the planning department in working with us on this, as we continue to build what's going to be the future of the next step for Littleton. If you think of the main campus of Littleton, this is near the front entrance, going to change the front entrance a little bit, but also it's going to modernize the front entrance. More importantly, going to offer heart and vascular services. We're going to start doing structural heart and implement a structural heart program, which includes open heart right here with that, uh, Littleton Avenus Hospital. So as you can see with our advanced neuroservices, advanced heart, advanced women's and, women's and children's, advanced services that we offer overall, you can see why that's shaping up to a regional referral center where more and more of the sick from different hospitals are going to be referring into us right here, to Littleton. And that's what's shaping up more and more for the future, and I thought that was important for the council and member of the communities to know. So there's just another view of it, and there's also another view of the front of the hospital. So thank you, council, for allowing me to present an update. I know this was a brief update, but I want to thank you for the work that you do, and I'll entertain any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. Any questions, council? Councilmember Grove, your, your microphone, Councilmember Grove.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, when is that going to be built?
Yeah, so we're going to start construction winter, this winter, and so that's going to be done by fall of two thousand and twenty-four.
And where does that face? It was kind of hard to see.
Oh, yeah, here. This is probably a better view for it. I went a little quick. That's a bird's eye view of the front entrance. So if you think of the revolving doors at the front entrance, uh, if you think, it's going to be on the east side of the hospital.
Okay.
So the east side of the hospital, it's going to be the front entrance, and so it's going to be right there. Uh, there's currently, uh, open grass and a parking lot right there. Yeah, so we're going to be adding more parking and all that.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question.
Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rick.
Uh, the next, uh, appearance is the LPS East Elementary Community Center. I got a contingent from, uh, LPS there, representing LPS, so.
There we go. All right, good evening. Thank you so much for having us. Uh, my name is Melissa Cooper, and I am the Assistant Superintendent of Learning Services for Littleton Public Schools. This is my second year in that role. Um, however, I have been a part of LPS, um, Schools. This is my second year in that role. However, I have been a part of LPS for 12 years in a different capacity, and I am also a proud parent of two students in Littleton Public Schools. And I say that to say I am so excited about the work that we are here to share with you this evening. This is very new, very innovative and unique. It's something our school district has never done before, and I get very excited when I have the opportunity to speak about it. It was very encouraging to me when I heard you all sharing your reports. Several of you already made mention of the fact that although we have been planning this work for about a year now, tomorrow night, we are kicking off our community engagement process to establish the needs for our community center that will be built on the East Elementary School campus. And I think the fact that you all mentioned this event already, even before we had the opportunity to share with you, really speaks to the partnership that our school district has with the city of Littleton. And I just want to thank you for that partnership. And I also am aware that thanks to the gratitude, or I'm sorry, the generosity of the community grants program, you all have provided funding for meals for part of our work. So I wanted to also acknowledge that, and thank you so much for that and extend that gratitude. So let me share a little bit about the details of this exciting work. You all are likely very aware that our school district has been going through a process to, thanks to our taxpayers and through our bond process, to consolidate some of our schools while also updating them. And our Board of Education decided about a year and a half, two years ago, that part of that consolidation process would include the two schools of East Elementary and Ralph Moody Elementary. And we went through a community engagement process at that point in time to determine which school location would house the new, the new building that would be built in the consolidation process of East and Ralph Moody. And simply due to the geographic location and the square footage that would be available, it was decided that we would be closing East Elementary School and consolidating the two communities on the campus that's currently on Ralph Moody, which, and it will go become a new elementary school with a new name, Little Raven Elementary School. Our board very much went through a very intense process to make that decision because we know that the community that surrounds East Elementary School has many needs that could present challenges as we move an elementary school out of that particular neighborhood. And however, we saw it as an opportunity to provide that community with a brand-new elementary school and also provide a significant commitment to honoring that community and developing something that we have never done before, which is provide a community center within the East Elementary School campus. So that commitment came from day one. However, our Board of Education has not defined many parameters around what this community center could look like. The district is committed to maintaining the property. The district will not sell this property, and instead, they will convert it into a community center. However, what it looks like and what it could become really needs to be driven by the community itself. And so our board has a high value for developing an inclusive process that really reviews the needs, the strengths, the components of our community that we can enhance by providing this opportunity for a community center. And they charged district leadership with establishing a process to engage our community with determining what the needs are. So we found an incredible partner, thanks to the recommendation of Commissioner Warren Gully, which I will have Taylor tell a little bit more details about her and her background and her experience. But why we chose to find a facilitator was to allow the school district to still be able to participate in the process alongside the East community for determining what the needs are. So this process, we are beginning tomorrow through a series of meetings, which will be housed at East Elementary School. We have, we are working fast and furious to try to spread the word and engage our community in a very inclusive process through a series of four meetings where anyone is welcome. Anyone from the East community, anyone from the North Littleton community, quite frankly, anyone from the entire district or the city, anyone is welcome to be able to come and engage in a process to determine what are the possibilities for a community center. Our main parameter is that this community center will be developed by the community, for the community, and be ready to open in some form or fashion in the fall of 2023. I say some form or fashion because we are not expecting to have a fully built-out community center by the fall of 2023. We're expecting to have plans by the end of this community engagement process that will prepare us to develop this community center, and we intend to open a part of it in the fall, recognizing that it might take us some time to fully develop it. Because our commitment, thanks to the vision of our Board of Education, is that we do this well and really celebrate our community. And to be quite honest, the business of our district has been in educating our students, not in developing a community center, and so we want to be sure that we're doing it right, and we are committed to that. So tomorrow, we will start this community engagement process with our partners in Civic Innovation Lab, and we will have dinner. We will have childcare. We will have interpretation for all, and we will have an opportunity to engage in a conversation about what the possibilities might be. So.
Thanks, Melissa. Hi, I'm Taylor Nickel, and I lead Civic Innovation Lab. We work with groups and communities to build effective collaboration and design shared decision-making processes to ultimately strengthen communities. And so we are so glad to partner with Littleton Public Schools to design a unique process to really establish and co-create a vision for what this building could be. So as Melissa mentioned, we do have a series of meetings which we're very excited about. And a little bit about Civic Innovation Lab, as I said, we really come from a background of community organizing and of community leadership development. And our network of subject matter experts includes former educators, public health officials, elected officials, all who inform our design process and our approach to community challenges and opportunities. And so that's really what's unique about this process is that we center the impacted communities and the stakeholders who are really driving the decision-making in order to share in the leadership and ownership of this vision and the plan. And so we know that this community center will bring value, will add value to the North Littleton community. Not only will it meet the needs of the North Littleton community, but it'll bring the service providers to the area. It'll generate business and foot traffic and positive energy to this community. And so really, this is an opportunity for the city and Littleton Public Schools to collaborate in serving the North Littleton community by supporting the success of the center. And so we invite you to participate in our meetings, really come and be a part of this, share your own ideas for what you think should be in the center, what your perspective and expertise shows would really be successful here, and from your own ideas of what would really work. So as Melissa mentioned, we have four meetings coming up. Dinner is provided, so that should be a big sell. And we're really excited to see you there, to participate with you, and for you to join us in this process. So now I'll introduce Angela Engel, who is our facilitation team lead. Her role is to really oversee and guide the facilitation process throughout these
Hi, everyone. So I know a lot of you, and it's wonderful to see you again. And one of the big questions I get is, Angela, what do you do? And so I thought I might start by answering that. I have a degree in communications and a master's degree in curriculum instruction, and I've been facilitating and leading facilitators for about the last 12 years. I also teach for a master's program for educators that specialize with at-risk students, and I have a nonprofit of my own called Uniting for Kids. And as a consultant, I work in professional and personal development. So I wear a lot of hats. This is one of them. I'm deeply devoted, like Civic Innovation Lab, to democracy, and we're all embarking on this grand experiment. I think what's so exciting about this East Community Center is that we, in our hearts, know that schools represent the hearts of our neighborhoods. And when we have to close one, it's painful for those communities. And so what Littleton Public Schools has embarked on is a really bold endeavor to say to that community, "We recognize who owns these spaces, and we're going to give them back to you." And what we do at Civic Innovations Lab is create models and structures and systems that promote the highest level of engagement. And unfortunately, when you're dealing with marginalized communities, a lot of times what you have is people that don't have practice engaging with communities. They don't have the experience of collaborative decision-making, and they don't have confidence about how to contribute and make these shared decisions. So part of what we do, I mean, we do it multiple ways, but one of the things that we do is that we have facilitators that are both from the community and look like the people in the community. And we have Patricia Rodriguez and Javier Reyes. Javier will be speaking Spanish tomorrow. We utilize language justice, which is a model that allows everybody to wear headphones and receive communication and instructions in the language that they're most familiar with. So what I'd like to do is just open it up for any questions that you might have. One of the things that we're really committed to at Civic Innovation Lab is doing something that Mike Green talks about, and he's the director of, let me see, Asset-Based Community Development. But one of the things he says is, "Do nothing that is not needed or wanted." And I think as representatives and elected leaders, we've been in those positions before where we have ideas and we deliver them to the community, and they're not received. And so what we're trying to do here is create an authentic approach to incubating these community ideas in which they're committed, invested, and bought into from the beginning, and so that we ensure success, not just, you know, from the concept of what is it going to be, but how is it going to thrive? How is it going to continue to serve the needs of those children and those families long term? So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions for any of the... Councilmember Barr.
I have less of a question, but more just thank you all for coming out and presenting this to us. I think there's a lot of opportunity to reach a lot of goals that we have as a city, and not just as it relates to students or the youth, but to the community as a whole. So thank you again for coming out, but also continue to engage us, and don't be afraid to come to ask about a direction or a need in the future, because, you know, I think this partnership is exactly what we're all kind of here for. So thank you so much.
Well, Councilmember Barr, we're going to take you up on that. So we'll be back, and we do want to say thank you so very much for all your cooperation. It's a really beautiful opportunity that includes so many partners, both public, private, and government, and so we're really excited about what's possible here. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just urge anyone watching, all residents, anyone that'll read about this meeting in the newspaper, to please participate in this. I know this is a huge asset to the community there. As someone who lives in that neighborhood and has children that attend Moody, I'm intimately familiar with the process of the consolidation there. So I think it's important to have the voices and input from the people that live near there and that will benefit from this community center.
Thank you so much for that additional plug along those lines. I do have some flyers for you all, if I could just leave them here and then... Thank you again so much for your support.
Thank you so much. All right, and the last item under the scheduled appearances is less of appearance and more of just a special recognition of our municipal judge, Ethan Feldman. So I'll just have a few comments before I invite Judge Feldman up here, or just require him to come up here, I guess, rather than invite. So as people may or may not know, Judge Feldman has announced that he will be retiring as our municipal judge on September 30th. This is his last day. And so we just want to recognize you and just acknowledge what an honor it is that your amazing work here in Littleton, this is the community that you call home, the place where you raise a family, where you worked and now will retire. So since February, was it 2nd or 1st of 2013, you have been our municipal judge. For better or worse, you have perhaps been the face of our municipal government to many of our residents. I like to think that our community is better for having you in that position. My guess is there might be a few of the courthouse guests who would disagree with my assessment, but, you know, not very many, I'm guessing. What is not debatable, though, is the fact that your appointment as our judge has carried great responsibility for our community. You've created access to justice when the doors were closed through COVID. You met each person where they were and provided opportunity for them to find success out of likely darkness. You empowered your staff to embrace change because it was the only consistent thing that was occurring in the work and that they were tasked with completing. And you embody equity and inclusivity in your everyday discussions and found value in creating a diverse workplace. And when adversity approached, you calmed a meter, carried others to safety. You know, some of these comments I'm reading have come from staff, so it wasn't all my own words here, but you did share a Jewish teaching with your staff at the courthouse a while back that said, "A man who saves a life saves the world." Your staff has said you've saved many lives over the years, and today that we recognize that 10 years of service in Littleton has helped shape our community for the better. Thank you, and congratulations on your retirement. And before I invite you, does any counsel want to say anything else about Judge Feldman before we give him the mic? Councilmember Valdez.
Thank you, Mayor. Judge, I thank you for coming to Littleton and even applying to be the judge. You came at a great time for our city. You have shown that our court is one of the best courts around, besides having one of the coolest buildings around, but we also had one of the, I think, one of the greatest judges. And so thank you very much for everything that you did and have done for our community and being a part of our community as well. Thank you.
Councilmember...
Yeah, Judge, thank you. Thank you for your service. I've had the pleasure of being the city council liaison to, you know, talk about the judge and make recommendations. I've also had the pleasure of playing behind him on the golf course. I recommend a little extra time on the practice range.
All right. Well, I'm going to come down and... Oh, Councilmember Miller, did you just say? Okay.
I was just going to say, thank you, yes, thank you for all your service and for everything you've done for the city, and I hope to see you on legal sometime.
Mayor, may I just make one more point?
Certainly.
I chime in that there's additional celebration of the judge's time here scheduled for Thursday, September 29th, so coming up next week from 4:00 to 6:00 in our courtyard here. So on behalf of the city staff, I'll certainly thank you for your very collaborative approach and your excellence in your service for your years, and just want to let the council and the public know that that event is scheduled, so we'll be able to continue the celebration then.
Thank you. Well, I'm just, Councilmember Barr, did you want to say something? No? Okay. I just want to invite the judge down. Now, we've got, on behalf of the city council here, we'd like to offer the judge a hand-carved gavel carved by the mayor pro Thames brother, Russ Riden. And so we'd like to, I don't know what you're going to be gaveling in your retirement, but I'm sure you'll find something to... Judge.
That's beautiful. Thank you.
He's going to get a picture. We got a...
May I be indulged for a couple of quick comments?
Please.
First, I'd like to... I don't have a PowerPoint, though. But I'd like to thank you very much for this. This is beautiful. Absolutely gorgeous. And this is my wife Nancy, my granddaughter Audrey, a student at soon-to-be Little Raven, but now Moody, and my daughter Sarah, who was a student at Moody just a couple of years ago. And my work family, Danielle and Maureen. Danielle, of course, you know I was the court administrator. Maureen is the probation officer. And we started at pretty much the same time. And Maureen has just been a wonderful asset for our court. She's not only the probation officer, but she's lately taken on the role of being the navigator, too, to help people experiencing homelessness and other issues that come into our courthouse. And she has a lot of professional skills, but more than anything, she has human skills. So I just think that it's really been a joy to work with Maureen all these years and to work with Danielle, who's really taken us a lot of places. It's really humbling when your own community accepts you as someone who is going to dispense justice. It takes a lot of trust. So I'm very appreciative of the Littleton community. I'm appreciative of all the city councils I've been in front of. I've gone through five either appointment or retention matters with five different city councils. Not once in my tenure has a city council person ever tried to say anything about any court case or anything, other than the fact that I mentioned before about Jerry, where he button-holed me and said, "I want to make sure you are taking care of indigent people." And I never forgot that. It made me think, this is the right place to be. So, you know, I guess I'm just the face for much worse than better of the court. It's the staff, just like the staff of the whole city. The staff is the heart and soul of the court. And I'm just so grateful for the staff and for the support of my family, and thank them too. So thank all of you.
Thank you. All right. Item six on the agenda are mayoral proclamations. We have two. The first one tonight is the Childhood Cancer Awareness Week. Whereas American Cancer Fund for Children and the Kids' Cancer Connection report cancer is the leading cause of death by disease in the U.S. for children between infancy and age 15, and has detected more than 16,000 of our country's young people every year. And whereas one in five of our nation's children lose their battle with cancer, while many others will suffer long-term effects from comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and the Kids' Cancer Connection, founded in 1994 in Los Angeles by Stephen Feierstein, are dedicated to helping these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids' Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patient psychosocial services to children undergoing cancer treatment at Children's Hospital of Colorado and Rocky Mountain Hospital for Children in Denver, as well as participating in hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and the Kids' Cancer Connection sponsor toy distribution, pet-assisted therapy, family sailing programs, Laughter Noon, laughter is healing, KCC Supercar Experience, Positive Experiences Services, excuse me, educational programs, and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Kyle Schlechter, Mayor of the City of Littleton, do hereby proclaim the month of June, Childhood Cancer Awareness, sorry, no, this is the wrong title here. The, proclaiming September 25th, October 1st, 2022, Childhood Cancer Awareness Week. And item two is Hispanic Heritage Month. Whereas the roots of Hispanic Heritage Month go back to 1968 and acted as Hispanic Heritage Week by President Lyndon Johnson, expanded to a full month in 1988 and acted into law in August of that year by President Ronald Reagan. Whereas this annual observance honors the history, culture, and contributions of Americans who celebrate ancestry from Spain and 20 countries in Latin America, ranging from Mexico through Central and South America to the Caribbean. And whereas Colorado's Hispanic and Latinx population is anticipated to grow from the current population share of 21% in 2020 to 33% in 2040. And whereas Littleton's Hispanic and Latinx population currently represents 12.9% of our city's population. And whereas Hispanic Americans make up the largest minority group in the nation and have significantly contributed to our government, culture, and economy over generations. And whereas Hispanic Americans have made many important advances in areas of law, religion, agriculture, art, music, education, technology, architecture, cuisine, theater, and exploration. And whereas Littleton is fortunate to count among its population a large number of residents of Spanish and Latin American descent, who grow businesses, offer innovative ideas, strengthen our economy, create jobs, and contribute to our daily lives. Whereas we appreciate and honor the countless achievements of Hispanic Americans and continue our efforts to ensure our city is a welcoming and inclusive place that provides just and equal opportunities for all. Now therefore be it resolved, I, Kyle Schlechter, Mayor of the City of Littleton, do hereby proclaim September 15th to October 15th, 2022, Hispanic Heritage Month, and encourage all residents to observe this month appropriate ceremonies, activities, and programs that celebrate Hispanic heritage and recognize the impact Hispanic peoples have had on our city, state, and nation. Next up is public comment. Public comment is a time for our members of the public to come speak to city council about concerns, issues, and even compliments they may have regarding city issues. If you wish to address the city council under public comment, please sign in on the public speaker form before the call to order at each meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. I will notify you if you reach a little out of time. I ask all members of the audience to please be respectful and remain silent while as you're speaking. City council is not authorized by the covered open meeting laws to discuss, comment, or take action at the meeting of any issue raised by a public comment that is not a part of tonight's agenda. I may refer the matter to the city manager and/or city attorney for immediate comment after public comment, or to staff to obtain additional information and report back to the council. All those who have signed up to come down one at a time, please introduce yourself, your name and address. If you are here to speak on the ordinance on second reading tonight, I ask you, please, to hold your comments until a public hearing portion of that agenda item to be included as part of the public record. If you are planning on speaking about the Aspen Grove Review next week, I would like to mention that we are acting in a judicial manner next week. Cannot hear comments outside of the review of the Planning Commission meeting and the review next week. And any comments on the topic tonight cannot be part of the record for the review, and it could potentially taint our review next week. We have one person signed up. We have Pam Chadbourne.
Good evening, counsel. I wanted to first talk about the judge's service, although they've left. But he did bring technical innovations that got us through COVID, administrative and through staff, having the right staff, the administrative improvements. And also, and he mentioned the indigent, he made reasonable and insightful reductions in fees and penalties for low-income and indigent people, and this is so important. Law is blind. Justice sees. And that is what our judge provided us. We're really lucky. So I hope counsel considers this when considering our judge's successor. My second item is Geneva Village, and that's because it's in CAFR. And I've talked to people who look only at the CAFR and see that Geneva Village costs money. And this is a false result. The CAFR is not useful for external reviews of reviews and expenditures. It's an audit of city finances. It doesn't tell the story of any project or property, much less Geneva Village. And so I caution everybody against drawing conclusions about Geneva Village from the CAFR. Geneva Village pays its own way. But it's my understanding that the city, perhaps some council members, starting in October 2019, directed staff not to, the new management company, Denver Real Estate Muggles, not to fill vacancies. So now there's about 12, and during the period of the CAFR, 2020 and 2021, were five to eight. And so the city failed to get the revenue that we could have. And that's your choice. And it should have been full. So if all 28 units were rented at the current rates, we'd get just short of $12,000 a month or $140,000 a year. And you know, the expenses that are there, back in 2017, 2016, a physical needs assessment was conducted by a company in Massachusetts, 194 pages. It is wonderful. I recommend that you all see it. And deferred maintenance had occurred. We need to expend money in Geneva Village, and the point is that it extends the life by 48 years. This is a property asset to the city that no financial advisor would recommend for the city to sell at this time. It pays its own way. The city owes the fund rents that it took in 2009 to 2013, plus we have 3A. We got half again as much as the city manager who sat here said that we needed. We can put money into Geneva Village and have it extend its life for another 48 years. And it's a great investment in historic value, gateway property...
Thank you, Pam. That's three minutes.
...in open space. So counsel, I urge you to consider Geneva Village and keeping it. Thanks.
There's no one else signed up? Would anybody else like to come down and speak during public comment? Seeing no one, we will move on to the automate consent agenda. Consent agenda items can be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinances must be read prior to title to a vote, by title prior to a vote on the motion. Any consent agenda items may be removed at the request of a council member. We only have the one item on consent agenda. We have ID 22205, a motion to approve, minutes of September 6, 2022. Testing, yes, we are.
Yeah, all right. Come on back. Come on back.
So, great. Kelly and Pam. It's gonna be a hard time retrieving them. Kelly and Pam, can you hear us? All right. We'll pick up where we left off, needing a motion for the consent agenda. Just say it. Don't point at each other.
Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Item A.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Nope. All right. Ready to vote?
The vote on the consent agenda is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item nine, general business. We have two items on the agenda for general business tonight. The first is ID 22198, 2021 Audit Report and Annual Comprehensive Financial Report Presentation. I'm going to turn it over to the city manager to introduce our presenters.
Thank you, Mayor. The annual financial audit is a fundamental component of several, of a couple of the city's, the council's goal, excuse me, both financial sustainability and good governance. So tonight, well, at this point in the year, the city's audit firm, Clifton Larchen, Alan, I need to slow down, has completed the audit for 2021 and is here to give their report to you. I always like to remind the council that the auditors are chosen and appointed by the council directly. And so they are your auditors for the city's financial statements. The effort to deliver the financial statements and the audit are certainly a, you know, a partnership effort between the auditors and the staff. With that, I'll mention one more thing. This report is coming to you a little bit delayed in the year for this year. Normally, you would have seen this probably a couple of months ago. This has been a challenging year for the financial reporting section of the Finance Department. The city's primary accounting accountant, staff member, who usually prepares the financial statements, left the city last spring, kind of in the middle of the financial statement preparation process. So our very capable finance director, Tiffany Hooton, stepped in at that point and finished the financial statements herself last year, more or less, and has then worked through the whole process with the auditors to deliver both the financial statements and assist with their audit report to you tonight. So we, I believe, I will tell you that I believe with our current and new staff on board, Tiffany has closed that loop and will have a strong process for the next year. With that, I'll turn it over to Tiffany for just a moment to, for any additional brief comment, and then introducing our auditors and our key staff.
Good evening, counsel. Tiffany Hooton, Finance Director. I did just want to thank all of you for having us this evening to go over the annual financial, annual comprehensive financial report for 2021. I know it seems a long time ago, but in the auditing world, it wasn't too long ago. Yes, Jim did mention that it is a little bit later this year... Yes, Jim did mention that it is a little bit later this year than we have had previously, and we did have some shortages in staff. But I did want to introduce Heather Byron, who is here. She's my internal operations manager, who has worn a number of hats over the last few months as we've gone through some transition in staffing and looking internally at some staff members themselves. And so I just want to give her a lot of cred for helping us get through this process this year. She was a direct liaison with the auditors, which helped tremendously in keeping things moving forward, which is what we want to do with the audit. We want to make sure we move forward and get it completed. So just want to thank her and the rest of the finance staff, and the city as a whole. Everyone has a piece of the audit, whether you think you do or don't. Everyone has a piece, so just want to thank everyone for that. And with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Paul Niedemiller, who is with Clifton Larson Allen. This is our fourth year with Clifton Larson Allen. We do have one more year on our contract, and if you recall, we do have a limitation. Every five years, we have to rotate our audit firm. And so next year will be our last year with Clifton Larson Allen, so we'll be looking at putting out an RFP in the future. But I will hand it over to Paul, and he will give you an overview of the 2021 fiscal year.
Well, thank you, City Manager Becklinburg and Finance Director Hooton, and good evening, members of council and honorable mayor. I am here to present the audit, and I think City Manager Becklinburg did a great job presenting. We work for council, so that's the role here, and I appreciate the opportunity to go over the audit results with you tonight. We spend 400 hours plus with management going over details, and so we're kind of culminating all of that with three deliverables within your packet. So the first one is titled the final governance communication. And what that really represents is a Cliff Note version of those 400 hours. I can go over all 400 of those hours tonight, but in the interest of time, we're gonna provide that Cliff Note version.
Thank you.
So as you see within your packet, there are a variety of communications from our firm entitled, the first item says qualitative aspects of accounting policies and practices. So in this section, we highlight that the city did not change any of their accounting policies and practices during the year. That's important for you as council to understand, if there was any changes that were made that would make the numbers look differently comparable to prior years. So we are here to report that there were no changes surrounding that. We also talk about various estimates within your financial statements. I went to accounting because I thought it was an exact science. Unfortunately, there's various components that are estimates that have maybe future changes that could be impacted on the financial results, and we've highlighted that related to depreciation expense, some of the self-insurance liabilities, and the FPPA pension liability. And then finally, in terms of the disclosures, if there was any significant, anything significant that would warrant your attention, we would highlight it with this and within your report. And I think if you look on the second page, some of the short, very short commentary surrounding difficulties encountered or significant discussions with management or disagreements with the management, you will see that there are none highlighted, which is very positive news from your role from a governance standpoint. Uncorrected misstatements, these are adjustments that were not posted, that were very immaterial, and were not required in order to receive an unmodified opinion, but were required to communicate those items. As well, under the heading of corrected misstatements, you will notice that we had three proposed adjustments that were made, and they're reflected within your financial statements that were brought along as part of the auditing process, and those are highlighted on page two of this final governance report. And then finally, we have a management representation letter, and this is, well, assigned by management, representing all of the things that we require in terms of, they provided us all the information, is this true and accurate? And so that is highlighted and is within your report. The next, the next set of reports is entitled in your packet, Independent Auditor's Report, Internal Control Final, and this highlights any maybe best practices or items that you want to consider for future from a control standpoint. Part of our role as accountants is to look at your internal construction, internal control structure, and highlight any recommendations from a best practice segregation of duties perspective. We did have a few items that are listed within that report, and I was not going to go over those in detail, but those are within the board, the city council packet. The final item that I would like to address, and this is really what we all came to the table for, is the opinion of the independent auditors. That is highlighted on page 11 of the ACFR, Annual Councilary Executive Financial Report, and you will see it is a clean opinion. For those keeping track at home, and maybe from past history, you always thought, hey, we've got to go to the second or third page to get the opinion. The Audit Standards Board is listening to the public, and now you'll see the report in accordance with Statement of Auditing Standards 134 now requires the audit to be listed right after what you report on. So within your report, you will see we have audited this, and we issued a clean opinion in all material respects. So again, a very positive result, and at this point, I am happy to discuss any further of these items that I've highlighted within our report as our role as your independent auditor, or any other items that council. So I stand for any questions.
Thank you. It's always nice to have a clean opinion there. Council, any questions? No questions, thank you for the very thorough report.
Thank you.
We appreciate the 400 hours of work, too.
We paid for it.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you, council.
All right. So this is, there's just an update, there's no action by council here, so just, great. All right, second item under the general business is ID 22206, which is a motion to approve an amendment to the city attorney's contract. I am the presenter here, so just want to, the city manager, or city attorney is now here. Just for public, let people know that, you know, the city attorney here was hired almost just over three months, or three years ago, not three months ago, three years ago, in 2019, and goes through a annual review. City council worked with a facilitator and met with them, did our individual evaluations, and then met into two executive sessions where we discussed the evaluation, feedback, and the compensation. And so I'm just happy to say that we have agreed to amend the city attorney's contract, renew it, amend it, with a modest pay increase, so. Anyone want to make a motion?
Sorry, mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve amendment ID number 22-206.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minute contract. Any discussion? No discussion?
Plenty of discussion, but we'll save that for-
We appreciate you.
We'll see what the vote. Jerry and Gretchen, Gretchen, did you get her?
Yeah, I'm thinking.
Okay.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, all right. Let me go back to the agenda here. Next up, item 10, ordinances on second reading and public hearing. We have one ordinance appearing before us tonight on second reading with a public hearing set. We have ordinance 202022, an ordinance on second reading approving the local historic landmark designation of the Mumford Residence located at 5622 South Cedar Street. We'll have a staff presentation, and council can ask questions of staff, then we'll open a public hearing. After the public hearing portion, we will need a motion and a second before any discussion. Ask council to please be sure to consider and address the criteria that staff will go over the presentation when providing your comments before our vote, so I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, mayor. I will very quickly turn it over to our senior planner, Andrea Mimna, for a presentation of the application and staff's recommendation. I would ask, mayor, if I may, I would ask for a moment to, for a kind of follow-up comment that's related but not entirely on point with the issue, perhaps after the council's action on this item.
Okay.
Thanks. And I'll turn it over to Andrea.
Okay, good evening, council. My name is Andrea Mimna. I am a planner in the Department of Community Development, and this presentation is on an application from the Molton family for landmark designation of their property located at 5622 South Cedar Street, known as the Mumford Residence. It is, the slides are not moving.
Try ending it and starting it again.
There we go. Okay. So here's a picture of the Mumford Residence as it currently looks, and you can see that the windows are boarded up, and it appears that it's not maybe in very great shape. But actually, much of the original historic fabric to this house remains. It is the Molton family's plan to preserve the house under the city's historic preservation program. And so the purpose of this agenda item is to hold the public hearing and for council to consider the proposed designation of the Mumford Residence. The presentation tonight will cover description of the property, the criteria analysis on how the application meets the code, cover the public notification and comment, and then we'll also have staff and HBB recommendations. So here's another picture of the Mumford Residence, and here you can see it's a one-and-a-half-story home with a clipped front gable roof. The exterior is clad with rock-faced concrete block. The original windows were leaded glass, and several of them are still in place. The architectural style has been stated as Edwardian, and the home was built in 1921. And notably, the historic building survey that the city had done back in 2001 identified this home as being eligible to be a local historic landmark. I'd also like to point out that a certificate of appropriateness has been conditionally approved by HBB for the property for preservation of the historic fabric of the house and also for two small additions. The City of Littleton Historic Landmark Properties are eligible for benefits such as tax rebates and credits, and a plaque is provided by the city. But in order to be designated, the property must meet the criteria established in the code. And staff has found that the criteria is met, and starting with the eligibility criteria, just go over these quickly. The home is over 40 years of age. In fact, this year is 101 years of age. It has historic significance to the community because it represents a historic architectural style. It's a good example of the Edwardian style. And the house has integrity because it retains its original building form, its historic materials and features. The Mumford Residence meets approval criteria for landmark designation, and the full analysis is in the staff report in your packet, but I'd like to highlight here the one criterion that is perhaps most prominent with this application, and that is the Mumford House is recognized for the quality of its architecture and that it retains the elements to portray that quality. Public notification included notice to property owners and residents within 700 feet of the property. The city posted the notice in the Littleton Independent. The property was posted with a sign, and of course, there was also the city website posting. The city did not receive any public comment following this notification on the application. In terms of the staff recommendation, staff feels that the criteria for landmark designation appear to be met, and staff recommends approval of the application and ordinance 20-2022, local historic landmark designation of the Mumford Residence, and a copy of that ordinance is included in your packet. And then finally, the HBB voted unanimously at their August 15, 2022 meeting to recommend approval of the landmark designation to city council, and their resolution is also included in your packet. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions, and I'd like to inform you that the applicant, Karen Molton, is here and is prepared to present a short presentation for you.
Okay, does council have any questions for staff? Nope, okay, great. Should come down?
Thank you, Andrea, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I think I don't have to say very much other than the purpose of just trying to give the background as to really why we're doing this. It is a family project. We purchased the house about a year ago, and the architects have been working with this, that have had background with the historical. We appreciate the assistance from Andrea. It's not opening. And... So our hope was really to purchase this as a family and then be able to restore it so that it's livable. Currently, it's not in good condition, and it will eventually be the residence for our children, who are adults, Laura and Katie. So it's essentially a project that we'd like to try to keep a lot of the original features and have it stand alone and hope that it'll stay intact for another 100 years. And that's all I have to say. I'm done.
Great, does council have any questions for her? Same questions, thank you. Well, we need to open a public hearing. Okay, we have one person signed up for the public hearing, Pam Chadbourne.
I'm still Pam Chadbourne, 11 block and a half from here, and I'm going to ask city council to approve this request for landmark designation. I want to thank the family for doing this, and it's a great thing when people decide to invest in their community for historic reasons and for, this is literally the fabric of the community. And this isn't the only house like this, there's a few in Littleton, so this adds to the perhaps interest of other owners of houses like this and other historic homes to participate in this opportunity. And just last night at HBB, there was a request for approval of a tax credit from another homeowner who wanted to improve their, had improved their mid-century modern home, in this case, up in Rabo Hills, that strengthens the home's value, but it also strengthens the community. Rabo Hills has a number of mid-century modern. This home is in a different area of Littleton, and it has these other homes. This is really exciting to me, and so I asked council to approve this request, and also let's just get the city engaged in outreach and engagement about these programs. I don't think, I don't see the city pushing, advancing, let me use that word, historic preservation as it does other initiatives. And we should be, because we have these assets, the 1890s downtown, the agricultural history before that, the South Platte River and the Highland Canal, which were the beginnings of transportation in this area that made us economically viable to Denver. And then folks came here and invested in the city and built homes like this early on around the railroad and that kind of development, and the river and the canal. And then later, mid-century modern around Martin Marietta coming here. And so we have this great history, and you know what? It's middle class. These are not grand homes. And I actually heard someone on HBB, oh, it's a pity we don't have the big stuff. We shouldn't have the big stuff. You know, it's the middle-class stuff that's lost. We have an opportunity here, and I want council, arts, tourism, culture, and history as part of it, and architecture. Let's get behind this and advance preserving more historic structures like this, encouraging individuals to realize the benefits they can get by doing this. People don't realize how much they can save and make off of their homes by taking advantage of these programs. It really is a net benefit. So please, council, approve this. Thanks.
Thank you, Pam.
And I'm sorry, I want to thank Andrea Mimna.
All right, thanks. I don't see anyone else in the audience, so I'm not going to ask if anyone else would like to speak. So on that, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion. I move to approve ordinance 20-2022 on second reading, approve a local landmark designation for the Mumford Residence located at 5622 South Cedar Street.
Second. Second.
We have a motion and a second by council member Grove to approve the historic designation. Any comments? Councilmember Milliman?
I actually have a couple of questions. One is, I don't, I'm sorry that I'm not well-versed on historical preservation and all, but, and that house is really, really, really cool. The addition on the back, though, does that, I know it's not altering the state of the house, but is there any, what's the, well, potential consequences, or are there any, if somebody has an older home like that and there is an addition on it, does that preclude it? I don't know. Yeah. If you can answer that, and then I have one other question.
Sure. So in the field of historic preservation, it's recognized that people would like to put additions and make modifications to their homes for several reasons, you know, of, you know, what they would like to do. And that is accommodated through a historic or a certificate of appropriateness application. And there's criteria that the applicant must meet in order to get approval for the modifications that they make to the exterior of the house. And probably the most prominent of those criteria is that it needs to be consistent with the historic house. And in this case, the Mumford House has approval from HBB for an addition on the rear, it's a fairly small addition, and then also addition, a dormer window addition in the, in the gable roof.
Thank you for that. My other question was, this is just kind of a history question. It looks like the house was built in '21, and the Mumfords both moved in from different states. They weren't from Colorado in like 1932 or so. Do you know who lived in the house for those 11 years?
I'm sorry, we don't have that information at this time.
Just curious.
Judge Philbin.
Yeah, I want to express my appreciation to the property owners for bringing this forward. Well, I recognize we cannot preserve everything throughout Littleton. It is great that we can preserve some of these establishments like this from time to time. So my appreciation to the owners for bringing this forward. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Grove?
I'd like to echo what's been said about historic preservation. I'm a big proponent of it. I think it maintains the character of our community, and thank you for investing in the home for your family and in the community to maintain this nice home.
Councilmember Bar?
Yeah, again, just echoing the sentiment, and thank you for bringing this to us and taking care to preserve this, you know, this unique piece of architecture that we have in our city. I just want to say if, you know, amongst city staff and planning, communications and whatnot, the more we can highlight these things publicly in our letters, our newsletters, and outreach and stuff like that, the better we can do to get more folks to take advantage of some of these tax credits and honestly preserve more of these homes. So not to turn your home into a tourist attraction by any means, but to say that thank you, and we hope you can set an example for others to follow.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? I just want to echo, I agree with staff's recommendation and everything that Ms. Chadbourne said about the property. So it clearly meets the criteria for being designated as historic, and I will be supporting this. So, anything else? Ready to vote?
The vote is seven in favor, the motion carries unanimously.
Okay, thank you. City manager, did you have something you would like to?
I know it's not customary, but I would like to just take a moment and to recognize our planner, Andrea Mimna, both on behalf of all of us and Pam Chadbourne. Thanks for that. Andrea recently marked her 15th year of service with Littleton. She's been instrumental in starting our historic preservation program. In her service to Littleton, she's worked with several councils to establish the Main Street Historic District, the Laughton District, Arapahoe Hills, and several landmark buildings. Most recently, she helped to transform the Main Street District into the Downtown District. Andrea has recently accepted a position with the City of Lafayette, and so I would like to just recognize her many contributions, thank her for her service and her expertise to our community, and wish her well in the future. So thank you very much, Andrea.
Thank you, Jim, very much. It's been a real pleasure to work for the City of Littleton. It's a great city with just a fabulous history behind it, and I'll miss it, and I miss everyone here, too.
Well, thank you. Sad to hear that news, but good luck with your future endeavors there. So thank you so much.
Thanks.
Well, and on that sad note, or happy note, depending on your perspective, no further business, we are adjourned.